It's time for Work Comp Talk. Coming to you from the Pacific Workers Studio in Concord, California. It's Work Comp Talk. Interesting people talking about the issues that affect the lives of the everyday people that keep our communities moving. Sponsored by Pacific Workers Compensation Law Center, the lawyers for injured workers. With offices in Concord and Oakland, Pacific Workers is the leader in California workers compensation, representing injured workers throughout Northern California. PacificWorkers.com, the lawyers for injured workers. Now to your hosts, Eric and Carmen.
Hi and welcome to Work Comp Talk. Yes, we are back. My name is Carmen Ramirez. Joining me today is my co-host, Eric Farber, and our special guest, Derek Johnson. This podcast is brought to you by Pacific Workers, the lawyers for injured workers, serving all of Northern California. If you have any, any issues, or you're injured at work, or you have any questions, feel free to reach out to them. They are on social media, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter. You can also find them at PacificWorkers.com. Welcome, guys. Thank you, guys, for joining.
Hey. Well, well, we got a pretty special guest today, don't we?
Very special. It's really fun. I love his chicken and waffles.
We have Derek Johnson, who is the owner of Chicken Waffles, the home of Chicken Waffles, isn't that right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, down, down in Jack London Square. And he is running for Oakland City Council at large. We, we don't get into politics a lot. We kind of do because Workers' Comp is, is pretty politically, I won't say it's motivated, motivated, but it has a lot to do with the legislature, that's for sure. And so, we, and in some disclosure here, we have reached out to, tell us about that. We've reached out to the other candidate, correct?
That is correct. So we did given also the opportunity to open the podcast and invite Rebecca Kaplan as well to join us. We have yet to hear back from her office. But we're very excited to have you, Derek. We're very excited that you're jumping on board with us. I think this is going to be something very interesting, given the fact that you are a business owner yourself, that you do live in the city of Oakland, and there is so much happening around COVID. Who better than yourself to kind of like tie all of this subject and talk about it, you know?
Yeah, yeah. You are from Oakland, aren't you?
I'm born and raised. I'm a native, yes. I'm, I'm, I'm Oakland, you know, I'm Oakland to the heart.
A son of Oakland.
Yes, I'm a son of Oakland. I'm very proud to be one.
Yeah, definitely.
So, and you've had House Chicken and Waffles, which you are going to disclose a little bit of the recipes today, is that right?
No, we're not, we're not, not, this isn't a cooking segment. I don't know if you want me on that segment. You might want to, my, my, my cook, head cooks and chefs from that kitchen to come and do that one. I don't know if you want me.
It's really awesome, awesome to have you. Third generation Oklander. You're raised by your single mom in West Oakland, in the Acorn Housing Projects, one of the definitely most underserved neighborhoods for quite some time back in the days. I wouldn't say it's the same situation now. Some things have changed. And, you know, the fact that you picked yourself up, took yourself out of that situation, were able to do something with your life, you know, opened up a business, and now running, you know, for Oakland's council. It's like, it's, it's almost like, tell us what it was like when this transition happened? How did you go from one place to the other? What was that flow like?
Oh, great question. And Carmen and Eric, once again, thank you for having me this morning. It's a pleasure to be here and I'm honored to be your guest on your podcast. And, you know, I decided to run, first and foremost, people think I'm crazy because I'm stimulated by the process. I mean, meeting wonderful people, you know, throughout this city. And as I said, I'm born and raised in Oakland. Oakland is my, you know, I have such a passion and my heart beats when we speak about Oakland. The city has given me so much. I have so many fond memories of going to Cap Wells and Doggy Diner and Mojo's Skating Ring out in East Oakland. It's just given me so much that I felt it was my time and my duty to give back because the city that I grew up in started to look different. And there's aspects that the difference is positive, but the difference that's negative is just very heartbreaking for me. It saddens me to see these homeless encampments. It saddens me to think that generations behind me, especially in the African-American community, won't be able to afford to live in this city. And it saddens me to hear longtime residents are still, are, you know, every day they consider moving to another place that's more affordable and have, you know, more of a better lifestyle. So those issues, I don't feel you should move because you want to move and you want another experience. You want to explore a new city or a job opportunity, but you shouldn't move or be forced out of the situation because you can't afford to live in the city that your family has spent generations in. And so those are some really concerning issues for me in the job creation. I really want to be involved in creating jobs. I've done that with my business and I will do that when I get in this seat. And I can explain that in more detail further on, but, you know, those issues really sunk, you know, to my soul and why I decided to run for this office.
So I'm going to jump right into a couple of questions. And what a lot of our listeners probably don't know is I'm kind of a political junkie.
Okay.
Kind of, kind of is an understatement.
So I, I worked my first campaign when I was 12 years old, growing up in Arizona. And my, my best friend's father ran for Congress when, when I was 18. I started working on that. I worked on Bruce Babbitt's presidential campaign in Iowa, as we called it vacationing in Iowa back then. And, and then I, I ran a Secretary of State campaign in Arizona. I was, and I crossed the, and I crossed the aisle. I was a big fan of John McCain. And, and they, they used to have these great politicians in Arizona, right? And they were very, kind of a centrist guy, believing a lot of personal freedoms. I believe in a lot of, and a lot of freedoms in the marketplace as well. That's why I'm a business owner, right? But I want to, I want to ask you, one of the things I always like to ask the politicians here in Northern California, especially places like San Francisco to Oakland, we don't see a lot of difference in ideologies. They're either left or further left. And so tell us what, what makes you different from your opponent?
I'm a job creator. I've created jobs. I've employed hundreds of brothers and sisters, black and brown individuals and others in the city of Oakland. I have employed those of those the most hardest to employ. I have a track record of employing those that have been previously incarcerated. And I'm very compassionate and passionate about doing that. Watching a young man or woman change their life around and get their first job and get their first check and become independent has been very transforming for me, myself, not alone, watching the transformation in individuals. So I believe that the opportunities for this city, we have yet to, you know, explore. And I want to be a part of that change and explore it. I don't have a problem with working or talking to people that have different ideologies than myself because I think that when you talk to people, especially people that are aligned differently than you are, there's still some kind of common denominator, right? Hopefully, we all want to make the city the best place it can be. And we all have a vision of what the city wants to, you know, where we want to take the city. So we have to look at where do we align. There's somewhere even in different ideologies, you align somewhere. So let's enhance where we align and, you know, and then agree to disagree on those things that we, we don't align on. So I believe that's where I definitely stick out different, that I will engage with all council people. I will engage with the mayor, no matter who the mayor is. And when I get in that seat, I will look at it as a business and I will do my job.
I think it's a great way to put it.
Bias to that, let me add.
Look, we, we, at the end of the day, we all want the same things, right?
Right.
We want jobs, you know, I'll never forget when I was a kid in a high school. I had a great teacher, a great professor, and we're watching some video about the culture in Japan. And they're putting the kids on the, on the train to go away to, to go away to school. And, and we're all looking at it as very, very different. And the, and my teacher says, what do you think she's saying to her daughter? She's saying, don't forget to brush your teeth. Don't forget to wash your face at night. Don't forget to say your prayers. We're all basically the same, right? We want the best for our families. We want jobs. We want safe neighborhoods. We want opportunity and hope.
Exactly. And we can't let bureaucracy or, you know, corruption interfere with that.
And so you've had the business for a while.
Yes.
Tell us about that.
Ah, the business. Well, let's see, Carmen, I'm gonna, it kind of, when she said transition into something new, the business is, I feel like I'm opening the restaurant again because this is something new. I've never run for office. And when I started the Home of Chicken and Waffles, I had never worked or owned a restaurant. So it was a very new experience. We've been there for 17 years.
Well, congratulations. Most businesses are out of business and restaurants especially too.
Yes.
Definitely.
We've been, we've been very fortunate to go through some very tough times. And listen, I'm not perfect. I, you know, everyone is, oh, you're this business person. I have failed tremendously many a times. I've had to reorganize my business. I've had to close restaurants. But through it all, I have the tenacity and the consistency to stay afloat and stay in business. I know how much this job and that restaurant means to my employees. I know that, you know, they're dependent on it and we've had to adjust with the times. And luckily, we're still standing strong, serving the Oakland community that has been very loyal to us. Our base is Oakland, the East Oakland, West Oakland, the Flatlands is my base customer. And I'm very loyal to them as they're loyal to me.
Tell us how you have adjusted now. I mean, a lot of businesses and they predict, at least a fourth of restaurants are going under, right?
Yeah. Well, not, 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 it's predicted that, I just read Sunday, that there's about anticipated 60 to 70% of restaurants won't return. That's, that's, yeah, that's, that's astonishing and it's heartbreaking.
Heartbreaking.
You know, through being nimble and we've had to shift our business model and the public and the community that is so loyal to us has really shown up. I mean, they've really come and supported our business. You know, our delivery is, we know, we now, you know, it's all these apps that we now use. So we've had to just shift our business. We've had to, you know, just a whole new business model from a full-service restaurant down to a walk-up and take-out. You know, we basically are the international home of Chicken and Waffles. You can get quesadillas now, hot dogs. I mean, you know, we've had to kind of go to a more grab and go food, you know.
Sounds good. I think they're going to go grab and go for some of that.
Yeah, there you go. Go grab and go, dog or barbecue wings. And then, you know, also thanks to Ayesha and Steph Curry and Jose Corona, their foundation, you know, with the work with the World Central Kitchen, that has really sustained us. We've been providing meals for seniors, for those kids that are depending on, you know, public school food, hot meals during the day that weren't allowed to get them. This organization delivers, picks up and delivers to community-based organizations who then in turn deliver these meals to their homes. And I, we have been providing those meals every week and it's been, it's been sustaining us. So I'm very everlasting grateful to the Currys and to Jose Corona. Jose, no, thank you.
The Currys have really done an enormous amount for this community, haven't they?
Yes, they are. They're, they're amazing people.
They really, they really have. There's so often I, I think, you know, because I, I don't know if you know this, but I represented athletes and entertainers for many, many years.
Oh, no, I didn't.
And, yeah, and so at least a few hundred, if not more, athletes and entertainers as, and I represented in my previous life as a lawyer, the Tupac Shakur estate for 18 years.
Oh, wow.
But the, the Currys, usually you see them come into a community, they do a little bit of lip service to stuff, but not the Currys.
No.
You know, it, let's hope he doesn't get traded ever.
They walk the walk and talk the talk, so they back.
Absolutely. No question.
Definitely.
So, definitely. So how, let's, let's turn to this. You know, we are a podcast about workers, workers' rights, work comp, right? What have you done for your employees and what do you recommend for businesses to ensure that their, that their people are safe on the front lines?
Well, what I've done is what I recommend all employers to do. You should have a safe workplace. And we follow the CDC and the Alameda County Public Health Department, all their guidelines, all the provisions that they set forth. We have all in, executed each and every one of them. We take temperatures with our employees. They have masks. They have gloves. They have hair dressings for those that are in the kitchen. You know, we have hand sanitizers. It's the home of sanitation, basically. We have hand sanitizer all over the place. You know, there's sanitizer for customers. They walk up to the window, the sanitizer, just sanitizer everywhere, right? And disinfectant everywhere. So you have to, you know, I'm, I'm, I know all businesses have a sanitation program, but it's just to the 10th level now. I mean, you're constantly wiping and sanitizing, you know, which presents a problem for reopening, right? Because then you're going to actually have to have more staff to really manage that because you got to also manage, you know, your operations. But now you have additional operations on top of the operations that you already have that need to be done very frequently. So we're really on top of that. And we, and safety is very important for our employees and particularly because of COVID. You know, I know from those areas that it's spiking and it's really concerning.
Definitely. The fact that you are so well-driven, the way that you've came about everything, whether it's your business and you understand Oakland more than 100% of you is made Oakland.
Yes.
How do you feel the community is going to, to receive all this information? Because I feel like some opponents have the same relatable things as you, right? So how does that make you, when you think about the community and everything you've done and put back into the community, what, what does that bring back to you? What is that? Does it make you feel like you have like an up hand? Like because you are connected more so with the community?
Well, I am the community. I think that's the major difference. I'm not a career politician. I, I've never had any political aspirations. I just felt the need and the desire to make a difference in my city. I'm very appreciative for the opportunities that I've been afforded by living here and having a great family and a great support system and a mother, a single mother, as you mentioned earlier, that worked three jobs to put me into Bishop O'Dowd High School. So I, I, I am the community. I don't see myself separated from that now or ever, to be honest. I will always be a part of this community. It's a part of my, it is my lifestyle. And I think now during these times in COVID, when you say, how do I, this messaging? I'm, I think that the message for me should resonate a little bit more because I'm actually living this every day. I'm, you know, I have a restaurant that we have to take care of our employees. I'm dealing with customers. I, I, I'm out now campaigning, so I'm in the community. And even though we're not supposed to be, we have to be social distancing, this is, I have to get out. I have to canvass. I just, I'm going to canvas with a garbage bag all around me and I have to maybe put a cardboard over my face so you can see me. But I have to get out and engage with people. So I don't, I don't see any separation between me and the community. I think that's the biggest difference probably with me and the incumbent and, you know, most politicians. I don't, I don't, I'm not doing this for a popularity contest. I'm doing this for a purpose.
The, look, you've created jobs, a lot of them, you've truly reached out into the hardest core of the underserved community to create jobs. You employ a lot of different, a lot of different types of people taught and you're down Jack London Square. You know, I think one of the things that is, there's, there's two things that I want to talk about. The first, first is, is creating jobs, continuing to create jobs in the underserved community. Oakland has done really well bringing tech in, bringing various things from the, from the peninsula, from, from San Francisco. But it's still about creating jobs in East Oakland and it's creating jobs in the underserved community, which are still very high unemployment rates.
Yes.
Talk about that. How does Oakland, how does Oakland create those jobs?
Well, thanks for answering that question, Eric. I, part of my platform is Jerry Brown, while he was mayor, created 10,000 new houses in Oakland, which we see developing now. My goal is to create 10,000 new jobs. And one way we really do that is, you know, we have this police issue. I would like to see some of those funds go to the Workforce Development Board, where we can work with community-based organizations to do just that. Get, get those that are underserved prepared for employment and look for employment. I'd also rely heavily on our private, public-private partnerships with our large companies that we have, large, small, medium, to enhance the, the job process and to make jobs available and have more of an open door policy and to make sure that we are hiring Oklanders first. That's also very important. And I'd also really look at our grant writing department and make sure that every grant writer in there knows about every grant opportunity all across the globe, you know, the federal government, the state. We need to be on top of it and get those grant dollars into the city and make sure that they go into job development and enhancing businesses and keeping the businesses that we currently have open. Because small businesses represent 60% of the employment in Oakland. So we have to keep our small businesses open and we have to keep them engaged in communicating with the city on their needs and making sure the city is meeting their needs.
Well, you, you crossed a bridge into where I wanted to talk about next is, we heard a lot of talk, I think, the, the defund the police, right? Maybe the worst messaging in political history because I don't think anybody's trying to take the police departments away. Although I think your opponent got a little bit hijacked with that. Tell us about what happened with that because there's, there is, certainly there is the faction of the fringe faction who does want to get rid of police, but I don't think you really want to get rid of police, correct?
No, I don't. So let me, let me.
Play blank.
Let me be real clear. I'm not for dismantling the police department. I think public safety is our number one concern. I just went to a vigil, Fred and I, who's my campaign consultant. We went on a vigil yesterday for a man being shot and killed and on Lakeshore, which is typically you don't, I mean, I, I'm born and raised in Oakland. I, maybe in the eighties I knew of a shooting on Lakeshore, but I haven't heard of a shooting in Lakeshore. And, I mean, I just haven't. So it's, that's an indication that we are living in some very troubling times. People are anxious. People are afraid. People are uncertain about their future. And crime is spiking in Oakland, as is COVID. And crime is spiking as well. So let me be just first to say, I don't believe in defunding the police. Second, I can't, you know, talk on what is done at the city level right now. I know that they have passed to remove funds from the police. And I will agree with you, Eric, that I think that we need to come up with a better messaging. Defunding has been explained to me a million different ways from people when I ask them, what does it mean to them, right? But I feel that we need to reallocate and repurpose. We need to train our officers. We need to, I, I don't feel that police are bad people. I feel that there's some bad apples in a bunch, which is with any organization. But I feel that we need to do a better job of weeding out the bad apples and focus more on our entry process into law enforcement, focus on our training, focus on making sure that the men and women that we select look like the people that they're going to govern. I think that's vitally important because they'll have an understanding culturally of what these individuals are going through and maybe even more individuals that are from Oakland, that are native to these communities that are vulnerable and where the crimes are coming from. I also think the NCPC policing is, you know, community policing is fantastic. That works. We need to.
NCPC?
Yeah, Neighborhood Community Police. I think we need to definitely enhance that, that area because it, it works. I, well, I'm Kevin, who's a dear friend and a city employee. I've worked with Kevin in many ceasefire and other crime-preventing programs that the Oakland Police Department does. And I thought, I think we need to look at police differently. They should not be social workers. We need to get them out of homeless and mental illness calls unless they, you know, are called and is a necessity for them. But I think that those can be handled by community-based organizations if we can fund those organizations because they're the experts, you know, let's get, you know, subject matter experts to handle the subject matter as opposed to police that aren't really trained in that department. So I think there's a lot of different things that we can look at and as a community should be involved. It should be transparent what the plan is and the community should be engaged in the plan. Because we can't look at, once again, like I said, I'm the community, the police are the community, period. So.
Yeah, it's, we're all part and parcel, right?
We're all part of the same, the, the, we're all in this together. So we have to, at this moment, at this time, we have to come together and, you know, enhance the programs that are work, do away with those, the bad practices, and change the culture of policing. That's really what needs to happen. And that's going to take some time, but we really need to change the culture of policing because you have generational officers that are training new officers with that old mentality. And that's what we need to really work on.
Well, I think you hit a lot of nails on the head. You know, Santa Clara is my understanding, they've been, they've had an Office of Public Safety that works hand-in-hand between police, fire, mental health and social work for over 50 years. And you look at, I think it's Camden, New Jersey.
Yes.
Same thing. They reimagined the Office of Public Safety.
Yes.
We represent a lot of first responders.
Okay.
And we represent a lot of police officers. And they all kind of say the same thing, you know, I wasn't trying to be a social worker, but that's half of my job or more. So it doesn't allow the time for them to get to know the people in the community that they serve because they're running from call to call that, that they shouldn't be on.
Yes. And, and the police take care of safety and holding our community together and bringing our community together and be more proactive and not reactive. We're a very reactive society here in Oakland. We react to crimes. We react to, you know, everything is reactionary. We're not proactive and get in front of an issue and to solve it before it escalates into something, you know, bigger and, and more tragic.
And it's all a 360 and it's a 360 culture, right? It's, we create jobs, there's less crime. More education, there's less crime.
Yes.
You know, more trust and transparency, there's less crime, there's less need, there's, it's all, it's all went one big ecosystem.
Exactly.
Which is why I, I've never liked issue only candidates, right?
Well, there's a very important part within your campaign, Derek, that speaks to many in the source that you're going to ensure to do a better job connecting the city hall with its community. How do you plan, which I think is very important, one, because somehow, some way, it's definitely not connected. How would you change that?
Oh, I would work with each council person and get to know them and know, understand the policies that they've written in the past, get an idea of what their vision is for Oakland in the future and see if I can combine and get each and every council person in their district to work towards the same common goal. And we might have all different ways of getting there, but once again, I'm a strong believer, let's align ourselves and let's work on where we're aligned because we have to have a common alignment. Yesterday at the vigil, I introduced myself to Nikki Bass, who's District Two, councilperson. Just walked up, said hello, introduced her. She says, very nice to meet you. I think that's what it's about. It should not be a confrontational situation. We might have heated arguments, you know, like you do in family, you, you, you know, you argue with your brother, your sister, your mom, your dad. But at the end of the day, it should be love, care, and we should come together as one unit and move this city forward. It shouldn't be, it should not be divisive. It shouldn't be separated. We should be one unit and I, and my job would be to also work with the mayor, no matter who the mayor is, you know.
It's very much, I'm aging myself, right? But Tip O'Neill, who was Speaker of the House in the United States for many years. Yeah, said, nine to five, we may be Republicans and Democrats, but after that, we're all just people trying to make it better. Right?
Yes. Well, that's what I'm going to do with that.
And it's, and it's very different now, you know. There, there was a change in, in our federal government where basically all the, you know, Congress had to stay there on the weekends. And so they all got to know each other and they all became friends. Then they removed that requirement to let them all fly back home every weekend and they're no longer friends, are they?
Well, let me, let me speak to that. As I tell my team, you know, we're in steroid mode right now. you know, we're in steroid mode right now, which means that there is no such thing as working hours or business hours. Every hour, the, every 24 hours is working hour and we have to stay up and put in the work. There's no more days off. You know, I was trying to take a Sunday personal day. There's no more Sunday personal days from here on out. You know, we have to commit to doing the work. I'm committing to do it while I'm running for this office. I will commit it to doing it while I'm in the seat. I mean, if anyone knows the restaurant business, I'm no stranger to 14, 15 hour days. And whatever it takes to get the job done is my motto. You stay until the job is done. So that means working over on the weekends. That means working seven days, eight days a week. You know, eight days in a row, I should say, then that's what you do. Ended on that. That's what they're electing us to do is to lead.
And there's great examples of leadership, you know, right now in, in America, I think there are still great examples of leadership. There's, uh, I, I, I certainly have my opinions on, on, uh, whether or not there's certain areas, we, we're seeing bad leadership and good leadership, you know, it's like anything else. There's lots of bad movies and there's lots of good movies.
Yeah, there are. Movies, you sit there like, oh my God, when is this gonna end?
Well, we, we certainly feel like we might be in one of those, uh, pandemic movies, right? There's, there's a few of them. I tried not to watch them at the beginning of this whole thing, but I watched one anyway.
Speaking about movies, Derek, what is one of your all time favorite movies?
That's a great question.
Boomerang.
Wow. Okay. Why?
It showed African-American excellence, love, relationship, but basically it portrayed us in a business setting. And it inspired me to just really just stay forward, even when I fell down and I wanted to create a boomerang. That's, that was my goal.
It's like uplifting, definitely. Well, that's a good movie.
So let's talk about a couple of other things. There's lots of small business owners in, in Oakland.
Yes.
Talk to us about the resources that are available to them now.
The resources are available to them now. Uh, the city, uh, there are, of course, you know, I think PPP is about to expire, has, is, is coming up soon. But if those that have not applied for the small business loans and the PPP, definitely do it. I would say the best resource, uh, we have an Oakland Indy Alliance, which is a small, which I'm one of the founding members of. Seven individuals, Chris Pastina, you know, the Farleys. We joined, we started an organization of independent business owners here in Oakland that's now grown to 300 and it's a support group and there's all kinds of information that we exchange. The Oakland African American Chamber of Commerce, the Oakland Chamber of Commerce, the Chinese Chamber of Commerce. I would say check your com, your, you know, your chambers, check neighborhood business associations, the Jack London District. There's a wealth of information and resources that they have reached out and gotten for small grants, 5,000 here, 10,000 here. And you just gotta apply for all of them. I mean, because it adds up.
Apply for all of them.
Yes, apply for everything. Do not be afraid, apply.
Talk about PPP. You need one thing to get PPP, you know, there's a couple of little requirements, but you essentially need, need a signature. And there's still $134 billion left in that, in that fund from my understanding, which is a lot of money. And, um, so I, and I'm seeing adversity creates people rising to the top, right? Lots of different stuff. I, I noticed that there's, look, I, I, born and raised in, in, in Toronto, Canada to a Jewish family. Bagels are like my favorite thing in the world.
I'm not doing carbs right now. I'm trying, I'm in the gym. I ate some bread at lunch yesterday and felt guilty.
But we have like one of the best bagel places I've ever had is, is Beauties Bagels. Unbelievable, but there's some guy out there that has started hella bagels. And he only does like a hundred bagels a week, but you can't get them. You gotta go on exactly at 12 o'clock. So we gotta get that guy bigger. Right? So he sells more bagels and I can actually try.
So he could have. His worries are bagels, okay?
But I mean, I just think, you know, look, for those out there listening, you ever thought about trying to start a company? You're out right now, laid off, work. Whatever it is, there's resources to help you get started in Oakland. And bad times are when all the biggest companies started. It, 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 it's what creates innovation, right? The scarcity creates innovation.
Yes.
So I'm going to ask you a couple of other things.
Sure.
Do you have a plan on how to get creative for some of our brothers and sisters who have other businesses that are closed, hair, salons, gyms? You know, places that are, you know, you can't do takeout at a gym. Is there a plan for helping those businesses survive?
Yes, I would say, I mean, and particularly for gyms, you just have to pivot. Look, like I said, I'm the international home of chicken and waffles. We have, we never sell quesadillas or, you know, all different flavored wings or hot dogs, you know, you, you, you're going to have to figure out how to pivot your business model, come up with new and creative ideas. And we speak specifically when it comes to gyms. So gyms could do things like, you know, get a tent, go outside, make sure that each, uh, each customer that's coming in to workout has a sanitation bottle and some, uh, paper towels they can wipe down. You just have to look at the CDC and public health safety requirements by the element of county. And then figure out how can you be innovative and have fun with them and implement them at your, you know, at your, at your facility. I know that the hair and the beauty industry, which is really concerning is that's where a lot of our African-American entrepreneurs, especially young women are and, and men that are barbers. Maybe we shift there so the technicians don't come in all at the same time and, you know, we, we alter and you do the, you know, the temperature reading and you, you put as much PPP as you can, but still get the hair taken care of. I mean, those things can be done outside, of course, but maybe shifting, you know, your workforce around. The other thing I would say is to be engaged and those that want to start a business is not only look at those resources, but talk to people like myself that are business owners. I always say that and they don't necessarily have to be in the same line of work that you're going into. But Eric, you have a wealth of information. You are very successful. You have a wealth of knowledge on how to create and sustain a business. And so people like you, people like me, and others that are already business owners have to be able to share that knowledge and we're always willing to share that knowledge. That's the best resource for me because that's what I did. I mean, I went over to Houston's in San Francisco and sat there every day until I learned, figured out how to run a restaurant. They thought I was from the corporate office. You know, coming in to, 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 to evaluate their performance. I was like, no, I just have a restaurant. I don't know what I'm doing.
Yeah, that's, that's it, right? Success leaves clues.
Yes, yes. I like that. I'm going to steal that from you, Eric. Success leaves clues. That's a good one.
Success leaves clues. Yeah. And it's true. Get a mentor. Look, people can find, people can find you. You're, you're really busy right now, right? You're a really busy guy right now, but, um, people get, you know, I've got the book out, which is a business book, right? The Case for Culture. People can go and, and connect with me, uh, anybody from Oakland Bay Area. Uh, oh, look at that. Sorry, I didn't know. I didn't even notice that, but, uh, you know, from the Bay Area, let's talk a little bit of more expansive Northern California. Oakland's a hub of Northern California, Sacramento, Stockton, San Francisco. Talk to us about, I know that, um, the mayor who has endorsed you, Libby, has also been talking to the mayor out in Stockton about universal basic income. Tell us your thoughts.
I think it's an amazing idea. Michael Tubbs, Mayor Tubbs is an amazing individual, amazing young man. And it just goes to show you a mentor can come in any shape, form or size and doesn't have to be older than you because he's actually younger than me, but I've looked to, to Mr. To Mayor Tubbs, for advice and his leadership. He's very innovative. I think if we can find a way to expand that idea would be absolutely amazing. There are people that are just really, really hurting right now. Look, I did this food giveaway this past Saturday. We gave away 5,000 boxes. People were going back home and letting their cars, getting in another car. And I was like, look, it's okay. I'll give you more food. You don't have to switch cars on me.
People are hurting right now, aren't they?
Yeah, people are hurting and we as, uh, as a, you know, as elected officials and as a government, um, and a city, we have to take care of our residents. I mean, you can tell when people are hurting. Look what's happening. Crime is going up. People are scared. You know, soon unemployment's going to keep, if these businesses, if we don't find a way to keep our small businesses open and find a way to keep our larger businesses in town and keep them thriving, you know, that's going to be more layoffs. So, you know, we, their universal, uh, income, I think is, is, is an amazing idea. And I'm, I, I'm supportive of it.
So, um, I, they even tried to pass it in a couple of countries. So we've talked a little bit about, you know, we've talked, uh, a little bit about, uh, reimagining public safety and your thoughts on that, getting creative for businesses. All great stuff. So going to talk about, um, something that's pretty important. We've heard a lot of talk about mail-in ballots and voting. Tell us about the, the state, because California, it, this is so strange to me because I've been a citizen now for about seven, six, seven years. And, uh, and I've always voted in every election by mail. And I was just sort of shocked when I saw this, all this stuff come up. I was like, doesn't everybody do this? So I was, I was just surprised by the, by the whole thing, uh, you know, and I just find it asinine, right? But tell us about getting mail-in ballots or absentee ballots in Oakland, in Northern, in California. How can people make sure they get their vote out? And when do they, do they have to register for mail-in ballots by a certain time, that type of thing?
Well, I, I believe this year everyone's getting a mail-in ballot. Everyone is getting one because of COVID. And we are, you know, I'm one of the, you know, big proponents on, you know, safety first, right? I also feel that if we need to open up the Coliseum Stadium or the arena, then we need to do that to have social distancing so that those that you know, don't want to do mail-in ballots or don't trust that can have a safe place and enough room to, you know, we have Oakland Auditorium downtown that can serve the West. Uh, we have Oakland Technical High School in the North. We have the Coliseum in the East. So we have facilities around town that could facilitate a safe, social distance voting space. But as it comes to mail-ins, uh, I'm going to make sure that myself and my team, uh, our campaign, we reach out to seniors, uh, those that need, uh, any type of assistance, uh, mailing their ballots. If we have to pick them up and mail them ourselves. I, I think that we should definitely go to the especially vulnerable communities and educate and explain the importance one of voting, uh, and that your vote counts and that when you don't vote and, you know, then you complain about how society is working. Well, part of the why you're complaining is because you didn't, you know, you didn't participate in the process. So I think we should definitely take it very seriously, especially in the black and brown communities. We have to get, and we have to get our seniors who usually do vote, but you know, now we just need to make sure that they understand that it's mail-in and, you know, make sure that they're able to get to a mailbox, uh, which, you know, seems very simplistic, but it's not for a lot of people.
No, it's not at all.
Cause that's when you jump on YouTube and Facebook and create these little how-to videos step by step and boom.
You just gotta educate the seniors on how to do the how-to videos.
It will do something to educate on those next thing, on the next thing, but you know, it takes some village, right?
Definitely.
Well, listen, uh, as a son of Oakland, we are, uh, proud to have you on our show. Want to thank you for being on our show, getting some of your message out, talking about some of the message. Like what you stand for. Again, we have given, um, the opportunity for Rebecca Kaplan to come on, talk about her, her campaign as well. Uh, but we haven't heard back at this point, correct, Carmen?
That's correct.
Okay. And Carmen is a daughter of Oakland.
Oakland High School.
I went to Oakland Senior High, so yes. Rivalries. So Derek Bishop O'Dowd was like, basketball was heated.
Yes, yes, yes.
It was a very heated, but yeah, definitely. Like Eric said, we're very happy to have you on board. Thank you for taking your time to share this information with a lot of the people listening on this podcast. And I do want to also have a way for them to connect, to find Derek, learn a little bit more about you. Where can they get that information?
Oh yes, you can go to my website, www.johnsonforoakland.com. Uh, we urge your support. You know, campaigns are expensive. I have to get messaging out in a very short period of time. So $5, $10, $25. And I need to get back on the fundraising role as my strategy team is telling me. We also
It's those $5 ones that matter though, don't they?
Yes. Yeah. I mean, every, I mean, you know, people, when they think of fundraising, when they think of donating, you know, people have this stigma about, well, I don't have a, it's, if you have a dollar, it's worth it. You know, it's, you know, whatever you can contribute is heartfelt and, you know, is meaning that you're, you know, hopefully supporting me and I get your vote because that's the other thing I need. I do need your vote. You know, we need that. But yes, and so, you know, volunteering is, is, we, we look in for volunteers. We have a volunteer, uh, section on our website. And I'm just so thankful for you having me here today. I'm a son of Oakland. You know, born and raised in the city. I love it, um, you know, just like no other. I am willing to do the work. I'm going to do the work. The same person that you see right here is the same person you're going to get when I win this race and sit in that seat. I will be available. My door will be open. Uh, I will engage with the community. I will listen to the community. And I'm just ready to, to get to work and, and take Oakland to a whole nother level.
Well, I, I can tell you as the son of of, of people who own restaurant, uh, restaurant and a catering company, nobody, nobody puts in the hours like restaurateurs.
Oh, oh my God. Yes, absolutely.
Never stops.
It doesn't.
Yeah. So you got somebody good who's going to take over once you head office?
Oh, I have good people right now. My staff, Hector and Larry, I mean, they're, they're amazing. So they're, they're, they, they run it right now. That's why I'm able to do this. That's why I'm able to do the work. I mean, they look at me every time I walk in the restaurant, why are you here? What do you need? You know? You know, get out.
That's great. Listen, it was great to have you on Johnson, um, johnsonforoakland.com. You could reach out, learn more about Derek. And, uh, it was just a pleasure having it on. I always like, uh, I always like to talk to you and, um, and, uh, good luck.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much. And with supportive individuals like yourself, I mean, just, I'm very appreciative. Thank you so much.
Thank you guys for joining us. If you guys want to learn more for the Workcom Talk Podcast, make sure you guys log on to workcomtalk.net. You can also visit us on social media, Facebook. And go ahead and listen to any of the podcasts on one of your favorite platforms. We are on Spotify. We are on Google Play. We're on Apple Podcasts. So any of your favorite platforms is where you'll be able to find us. And once again, Derek, thank you so much. Eric, thank you for joining me. We'll catch you on the next episode here of Workcom Talk.